The second item on the agenda is to vote on all of the ATM warrant articles. The very latest thought off the presses, literally from the 5:30 meeting version of the ATM warrant. So, the two votes. Thanks for starting that, Jason. All right. The, bring it aside, share. Oh, I didn't just read it in this one. Oh, that's awesome.
Michelle?
Sorry, just trying to share the content.
Bottom right. Does it mean anything to you?
Yeah, I think we're...
Just go that way, yeah?
Yeah, we're good, right?
Whatever. Because it's the column blue.
Oh, okay. All right, so this is, this is the one where we finally...
Yeah, I was gonna say, you can kind of hide column G, yeah, and just maybe go, um, go right to FY24 adopted. Yeah, that way you can kind of... Zoom it in. That might be easier.
All right, so if folks have items that they would like to ask questions on or get addressed, please just either raise your hand if people can keep an eye on the screen for me, since I'll be reading these off, that would be helpful. Anybody in the room, if there's a question, please raise your hand. All right, so town moderator, total of $100. Select board, total of $368,500. Finance committee, total of $3,000. Reserve fund, total of $21,330. Town accountant, total of $79,250. Assessors, $97,650. Finance department, $206,366. Legal department, $80,000. Human resources, $42,250. Information systems technology, $186,750. Town clerk, $86,774. Elections, $31,180. Conservation commission, $92,150. Planning, $94,350. Zoning appeals board, $27,450. Other land use, $3,050. Public building and property maintenance, $152,950. Police, $1,934,649. Fire, $1,310,897. Inspector, $125,300. Civil defense emergency management, $7,750. Animal control, $29,750. Forestry, $51,790. Dispatch, $159,100. Benedict Upden Regional School, $11,46,827. Blackstone Valley Regional Vote, $1,374,882. Aggie, $356,577. Highway Department, $74,440. Snow and ice, whoa. Sorry. Snow and ice, $194,000. Street lighting, $43,000. Waste collection, $681,200. Water distribution, $32,150. Cemetery, $100. Board of Health, $111,600. Council on Aging, $169,310. Veteran services, $39,150. Library, $329,500. Recreation, $22,000. Parks department, $95,550. Historical commission, $4,000. Retirement of debt, $779,000. Interest on long-term debt, $99,000. State assessments and charges, $6,800. Retirement and pension contributions, $1,128,000. Workers' compensation, $26,000. Unemployment compensation, $30,000. Health insurance, $1,176,356. Life insurance, $25,000. Medicare, $60,450. Other insurance, $75,000. And liability insurance, $138,500. For a total budget for FY25 of $23,988,888, which compared to revenue, presents a completely balanced budget. There any comments from people in the audience? Any comments or questions from the FinCom or people online?
I just have one more question, I'm sorry I was late, I was at another meeting. What did the land use, was it $3,000?
$3,050.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I know that was super exciting. I do want to give a shout out to our finance director here for taking on the task of doing all of the great hard work on the budget. There was a role and responsibility, I think, question as we moved through town administrators and, you know, thank you, Jody, for doing a great job. I know that at least me personally have felt way more involved in the budget development and I think that this is, this was a great fiscal year in terms of working together collaboratively and I feel even more knowledgeable about the budget thanks to how we've all been working together.
Yeah, I want to second that. Coming to the meetings and probably also you were sitting next to me most of the time and I could look over and see some of your cheat sheets, but anyways, it was helpful for sure, thank you.
All right. With that, we will move over to the ATM warrant. Jody, do you mind popping that up? Do you have it open?
Yeah.
I thought I did.
I'll just do my forward two only because I'm not in the meeting.
Oh, then I can...
Do you have it on your email?
Yeah, I've got it, let me just...
Yes, I do. I've been doing the meeting in chat too.
It's not giving me the word as an option to... Sure. Okay. That would be helpful, thank you. All right, while Jody is sharing, while Jody's bringing it up and sharing, let's see, so the only ones we need to vote on, so again, we are voting to make a recommendation to the town at town meeting on whether to support the article or not. We are only going to be voting on the ones that are related to the movement of funds. So, the first one is Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer a sum of money from available funds to pay bills of a prior year or take any action relative thereto. And the total is $20,487, moving from free cash. Do we have a current balance before and after of all of the areas, well, free cash and anywhere else else, especially, you know, things from CPA and...
I can't, well, you just...
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I was right there. We can, we can give a running total on, I can give a running total on free cash. Free cash, we started with about $372,000 and I can give you a running total once this is all deducted, of a balance of unappropriated free cash.
Okay.
I think Mike has a question.
Can I ask what the bills of a prior year are?
You sure may, yeah, you sure may. So, this particular bill is with our insurance carriers for police and fire other insurance. In May of last year, right during budget time, we budgeted for an anticipated amount and then when renewal rates came out based on claims history, that number skyrocketed based on claims. And so essentially what should have happened is that we should have done this process in fall at the special town meeting. It just got, kind of fell through the cracks and so we're addressing it now, but we paid as much as we could of the bill based on the amount that was budgeted. We also leveraged miscellaneous expense through the select board's budget to be able to, you know, make another good fake payment because typically this is paid in full at the time of, you know, renewal. So this is the balance and we worked with our partners and told them that we would be able to get this just as soon as we could get it voted through town meeting.
All right, can I get a motion to, get a motion to vote to make a recommendation to the town to support Article 3?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Dennis, please support it. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to determine what sums of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and to provide a reserve fund for the ensuing fiscal year or take any action relative thereto, in the amount of $23,988,888. Jody, would you like to hop through that detail?
That's just essentially approving the budget that we just went through.
What we just went over.
Yes, exactly.
Any questions?
Nope.
Just might want to do a little call when you vote, because you're online too. Oh, you're right, yeah, thank you. All right. Can I get a motion to recommend to the, to vote to recommend to the town to support of Article 4?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Nick, can you just call out your name when you vote?
Yeah.
Jack as well?
Yeah, Nick's, aye. Jack, aye.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we're going to skip over Article 5. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer from available sources of a sum of money to fund the FY25 portion of the assessors cyclical inspection program or take any action relative thereto, raise and appropriate $10,100.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Nick's, aye.
Thanks, Nick. Jack, that was you. Can you just say your name and...
He did.
So you did?
Yeah, I said Jack. I did hear it.
All right, Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund the FY25 portion of the update valuation account or take any action relative thereto, raise and appropriate $19,800.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chair, would you, would you just mind advancing the, the screen here to capture Article 7?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Jody, if you wouldn't mind doing that, that would be awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Aye. All right, Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer a sum of money from available funds for the police department, for the, for police department state federal general matching grants or take any action relative thereto, raise and appropriate $19,800.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Nick's, aye.
Thanks, Nick. Jack, that was you. Can you just say your name and...
He did.
So you did?
Yeah, I said Jack. I did hear it.
All right, Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund the FY25 portion of the update valuation account or take any action relative thereto, raise and appropriate $19,800.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chair, would you, would you just mind advancing the, the screen here to capture Article 7?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Jody, if you wouldn't mind doing that, that would be awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye.
All right, Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer a sum of money from available funds for the police department, for the, for police department state federal general matching grants or take any action relative thereto, move $5,000 from free cash.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. So this was originally at $3,500 and then it was, I was just curious, I know we discussed this, I can't remember.
Greg had asked me earlier this morning and I thought it was five, but then I went back and I, when I got to the station, I told him it was 35, so is that permanent now? I think he said it was going to adjust it, adjust it a little.
He adjusted it from 35 to 5 since the last meeting.
Yeah, it's supposed to be...
35?
Yeah, 35.
Okay.
Too late to adjust that or...
No, they're voting on it right now.
Yeah, I mean, I guess...
So I, we amend the motion to 3,500? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. Okay. All right, so we will get an amended motion to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer a sum of money from available funds for the police department state federal general matching grants in the amount of 3,500.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
So, we'll get that updated before that goes to print? Yeah, and that one, that's going to just be in the motion. Oh, that's right, that's just in the motion. Okay. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer a sum of money from the National Opioid Settlement Program Fund, funds to the police department budget, line item National Opioid Settlement Expenses for Qualified Opioid Remediation Programs or take any action relative thereto, in the amount of $7,500 from settlement fund proceeds.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye. All right, Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer a sum of money from available funds to fund FinCom reserves or take any other action relative thereto. So I didn't read, amount TBD to supplement FY24 reserve fund account, 50,000, so I guess what was the discussion earlier about this?
I wouldn't...
Mr. Cotten?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was TBD when we met at 5:30.
Yep.
Originally, great that we're going to pass it or I suggested this was to make funds accessible for the remaining 60 days of fiscal year.
Yep.
In the event they're needed.
Yep.
If we don't spend them, develop some old free cash next fiscal year.
Yep.
So 50,000 was just the number we said makes sense given we have free cash.
Yeah.
Department there.
Yeah, so...
So it'll be 28,670 would be the motion?
To get...
To make the 50, right?
I was, I was actually just moving 50 to...
Oh, you're, okay.
Something, something.
Yeah, and that gets us closer to our original ask.
Right, it's usually done in the fall of the year.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, so it's a solid 50.
And what's the anticipated reason for that?
This is purely just in case in the remainder of the fiscal year, the last 60 days of the year, to make the funds accessible in the event they're needed.
Repeat that again.
There's no intended spend, but by doing this, we have available access, access to those funds in the event an emergency will occur and we needed them.
It was actually...
For the free cash, we're going to need another...
For this fiscal, for, for next fiscal...
For this fiscal year.
No, this fiscal year, for the remaining two months, 60 days.
This budget is for next year.
Well...
This is the warrant article, so this goes in place after it gets voted on at the, at the...
We're moving free cash into FinCom reserves for the discounted fiscal year.
So, if I'm not mistaken, then July 1st, if it's not spent, it rolls back in...
Correct.
In basically two months' time, okay.
Yeah.
Are you anticipating any unforeseen?
No, no. Cross my fingers on that.
As good as the crystal ball can be, right?
What was, refresh my memory, what was the ask that we...
So we had, we had wanted to bump FinCom reserve up to 75,000.
75, okay, yep.
And through the budget discussions, we discussed incrementally funding that over time through the operational budget.
Yep.
But in the meantime, continue with the best practice of funding at STM. This time around, we're at ATM and it doesn't hurt to put it in there at the recommendation board, so it's fine.
And one more question, the, the available funds is coming from?
Free cash.
Yes, you have questions? Okay. You, did we get a, a motion in a second? I can't remember.
Not yet.
Did you want to make a motion or? I'm just trying to make it easy for the secretary, that's me tonight.
I'm still thinking about if I'm going to support it or not.
But that won't, that won't matter as far as making the motion though, right?
I need, I need a motion from somebody to...
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept Article 10.
Okay, do I get a second?
Jack, second.
All right, any other further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Mike abstained.
Article passes. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the community preservation accounts to fund the FY25 police, FY25 police station debt exclusion or take any other action relative thereto, in the amount of $101,355 from the community preservation fund account.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? And what do we have for starting balances on CPA funds?
Starting balances? Well, I know that if we vote yes on everything in the CPA accounts, we'll still have $200 in the CPA accounts over two weeks.
Do you know what it is now? I didn't add up all of the...
Uh...
Okay, thank you. All right, any, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Article 12, to see if the town will set aside for later spending from the FY25 community preservation revenues for open space, for historic preservation, or from, sorry, let me start this over, to see if the town will set aside for later spending from the FY25 community preservation revenues, 10% for open space, 10% for historic preservation, 10% for affordable housing, 65% for budgeted reserve and 5% for administration or take any other action relative thereto, in the amounts of $449,139 from local community preservation surcharges and $201,28 from state funding, for a total of $649,267.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye. Article 13, to see if the town will transfer a sum of money from the community preservation accounts to fund the FY25 part-time affordable housing coordinator position or take any action relative thereto, in the amount of $8,360 from the community preservation fund account.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye. Article 13, to see if the town will transfer a sum of money from the community preservation accounts to fund the FY25 part-time affordable housing coordinator position or take any action relative thereto, in the amount of $8,360 from the community preservation fund account.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Has there been a report on the activity that this position did for the last year?
Well, the regional coordinator has, is working on helping us get the housing production plan, which is a requirement by the state so that we, if the town can take advantage of grants, state grants. She has helped us obtain grants, one being housing production from U-POM mass housing so that we can look at the Patty property and 75 properties, to determine what kind of affordable housing we'd be dealing with. And she's done, she's done other things. She also like connects us with grants that we don't know about, I'm just writing them.
Heads up. Again, every department sends a report in to get published, has a report been sent in to go into the end of year book.
Yeah, well, in the past, the community preservation committee sends a report in and I did that and we never have done an affordable, specifically for affordable housing. So this is the first time in perfect. Jack Hunter Planner Dylan Litholm, the assistant planner, Miracul, for housing. So I wasn't really sure who would, you know, break up that information. I mean, if you want to engage, we can report on that topic and then do that in future, because that was something I'm asking.
I'm just asking the question because you, I would think whoever the affordable housing coordinator position, fulfilling that, I know we're sharing it, correct? That's that position that's shared? I would presume a report would be handed in to each, to each town that he's sharing his time with on what he did for that town and I'm asking if that was done and if so, where can I find it? So obviously, there's no answer.
It sounds like it was not.
Yeah, I mean, we, I, we do have information of what we've done. I can put something together for FinCom and then, you know, we put it in, we'll be in town meeting.
Sure.
Could be a recommendation going forward for the annual town report, sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I'm not asking that question just for the finance committee, I'm asking it for every citizen in this town. They should have the availability to see what this position does, just like the CONCOM, just like the FinCom, the Board of Selectmen, the Council on Aging, everybody submits some information so that the townspeople, if they can't sleep at night, can open that book and read.
And fall asleep, right, yeah.
Agreed. I don't, I don't disagree with the sentiment at all.
Yeah, I'll have something to do that by next week, okay?
Okay, great. All right, so... All right, so, any other further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye. Good. Skip over Article fourteen. Skip over Article fifteen. All right, Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, a sum of money to operate the municipal subscriber curbside trash and recycling service enterprise fund, or take any other action relative thereto, uh, raise and appropriate from user fees in the amount of six hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, a sum of money to operate the water enterprise fund, or take any action relative thereto, from, uh, salaries, four thousand nine hundred, contracted services, fourteen thousand, expenses, thirteen thousand seven hundred, water infrastructure repair and replacement fund, twenty-five thousand six oh two, purchase of water, hundred and sixty thousand, indirect costs, twelve thousand three eighty-eight, for a total of two hundred and thirty thousand five ninety to be funded as follows. Department receipts of two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight, retained earnings of fifteen thousand, and transfer from the special article from May sixth, twenty sixteen, of ten thousand six hundred and two.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye. Uh, let's see, Article eighteen, uh, to see if the town will vote to set limits on the revolving funds in accordance with MGL Chapter fifty-three E one-two as follows, or take any action relative thereto, uh, limits on spending in the revolving funds for the following areas, library, six thousand, planning board, thirty thousand, highway, twenty-five thousand, conservation commission, twenty-five thousand, parks, a hundred and sixty-five thousand, fire department, ten thousand, Title V, Board of Health, twenty-five thousand, and police department, fifteen thousand.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Mr. Nick?
Oh, sorry about that, uh, Nick, aye.
Thank you. Aye. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer a sum of money from available funds to fund retirement payouts, or take any action relative thereto, moving thirty-five thousand in free cash.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, a quick question, so, this went from thirty to thirty-five thousand, I was just curious what the last minute change was?
Um-
Was just more anticipated that-
Yeah, so it, it, this is, originally was two individuals, and it's a third individual.
Yeah, okay.
Sure. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer a sum of money from available funds to fund capital projects, or take any other action relative thereto, moving two hundred and fifty thousand from the sale of town-owned land account, specific scope of the capital expenditure will be included in the motion.
Does anybody have an idea what that motion, how that motion's gonna read?
Mr. Cottick?
Yeah, the intent of this is to provide supplemental funding on top of Chapter ninety, to do a move, uh, roads, it's part of a multi-year effort to, uh, invest a little bit more in the roads than we have in the past.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye. Uh, Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money by borrowing in accordance with any applicable statute to design and construct a Mendon senior and community center, including costs incidental thereto, be located on town property at North Ave, and to authorize the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for that purpose, and to apply the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, to pay project costs and reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed by the amount of the premium so applied, provided, however, that this appropriation and debt authorization be contingent upon the pa, passage of a proposition two and a half debt exclusion question for MGL Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one CK, or take any other action relative thereto.
So moved.
In the amount of borrowing thirteen million two hundred thousand for the debt exclusion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, this is Nick, um, can we talk just a little bit about exactly the funding, so that this is, anyone who may be listening at home can understand, um, the impact to, uh, taxes, and, uh, how this would be funded, uh, moving forward?
That is a great question, the Council on Aging would like to come up and address any of that?
Well, I think we could probably address, working with finance, Jody.
Okay.
Uh, we've come up with some schemes to fund thirteen point two, and a down by a number for the individuals based on their assessed values, and, uh, Jody, I'm gonna go to the front of it, but I can get them.
Okay, I'll bring mine up as well.
I have the notes here if you want.
Yeah, after doing some due diligence with finance, we were able to come up with, uh, a method that also not only helps this project with these projects, I think we're gonna stress that more for the town meeting, but the individual impact, we had a number of, using a number of assessed value of five hundred thousand, and we've, uh, come up with a number of, that would be a hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents per year, or thirty-seven forty-five per quarter, and the important thing about that is that we've come up with a financial scheme, through the finance department, whereby we're not absorbing all the available funds that we have, in our borrowing, in our, on our debt management.
Sure.
So we should be able to have more funds for additional requirements from other departments within the, within the, within the town. Jody, you may wanna-
Yeah, I mean, big picture, we have, um, debt rolling off in fiscal twenty-five based on the school debt that has been exhausted. Um, there are no new asks from the school this year, whether it be Mendon Upton or Blackstone Valley, but we know they're coming in FY twenty-six, so looking across our, um, our debt service, and with the understanding that anytime we secure new debt, taxes go up, um, but we tried to minimize impact, so, without showing you a bar chart and a model, you know, of how we did this, we were able to leverage different financing tools, um, through bond anticipation notes, which is short-term borrowing, all the way through long-term borrowing, and staggering our debt in such a way that we would be minimizing impact to the taxpayer. Um, so that being said, for the first, you know, the first year, being able to minimize that impact as best we could, it ended up being a hundred and forty-nine dollars and change annually, um, to a taxpayer to whom owns and has a property valued at five hundred thousand dollars. We are gonna be able to, um, show what those bands look like, all the way from someone who owns something at a hundred thousand dollars, all the way up past a million, so you can get an understanding of sort of where you fall as a taxpayer, um, based on the property that you own in town, and so essentially, you know, it is, you know, some strategic, looking forward, um, as it relates to what we have in front of us that are already on the books debt-wise, um, what this project would do to impact our current debt, but then also leaving room for the school and the requests that are impending, um, that we know are coming for FY twenty-six, but don't potentially have, you know, the exact numbers yet, um, we do have a better idea from Blackstone Valley, as they shared that information with us a few weeks ago, so that's sort of built in there as well, um, so again, really looking at all of the things, not just isolating this project, you know, but really looking over the next twenty, thirty years to say, how does this all shake out, you know, down the line, with the one goal in mind is to ensure stability of our tax rates for our taxpayers, um, and so that's really what we did in order to get where we, where we are, and we feel good about, um, the numbers that we're able to, to leverage, um, for this project and, and share out, which I will be, you know, since we're on and everybody's listening, I know that initial projections were up around the three hundred and fifty dollar mark, um, per taxpayer on an annual basis, um, but again, after doing a lot of figuring, a lot of analysis, a lot of strategy around how to best manage our debt, um, that number was essentially cut in half, which is, which is great, um, so for anybody that sees things on Facebook, or, you know, hears things, oh, it's three hundred and fifty dollars, like, we can, you know, be sure to say, um, it's not, it's a hundred and forty-nine for someone who, uh, owns a five hundred thousand dollar home, so that's really where we're at.
The video that's on YouTube for people to go watch mentions that number, and-
It did, the three fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and at the time, that was the number.
This was a work and project, process project from day one. We started out with, uh, thirteen point two million dollars, with an extremely high ask for debt and tax, and tax payment by the people, and we worked it down to three fifty, Jody continued to work with it, with the financial community, and we were able to bring that down even better, and the important thing, I think, here is, it also blends into the fact that we're looking at capital plans, now, capital expenditures for more than just today's crisis, not just the senior center. I think the select board and a few other people have put together a committee, and we've shared it with you before, and I think will continue, will be a foundation going forward, so we'll understand what our five-year debt looks like, and what capital plans are coming onboard, so that Jody and finance and the financial community can take a look at how we do our bonds, and get more lead level spending and tax increases to our, our folks. I think this number they came up with is phenomenal, uh, considering that you can, for assessed value of five hundred thousand, that's not the sales value, assessed value, you're at a, you know, a fifty cents a, a day, or less, forty-some cents a day, uh, and I think, uh, again, we'll go back to Jody and the team, they did good work bringing that down in line, and the other important thing is there's money and room left in for the other organizations. We didn't go after, we could've come in lower, but we didn't, uh, Jody, with due diligence, said we need to leave enough room for our schools, we need enough room for other emergencies in coming years.
Yeah, I mean, I guess just from a, a taxpayer perspective, right, we're going to either recommend or not for this to go to a ballot, and they're going to, what they're going to see is, okay, I'm gonna have to pay another a hundred and fifty bucks and change, right, depending, um, in my taxes.
Correct.
Uh, that's much better than three fifty, but I think the taxpayers need to be aware that where the schools are going, combined with where the state has been going, combined with where our operational budget is going, we have a lot of overrides and a lot of discussions about where finances go in this town in total, and we need to be making all of those choices, I'm thinking about all that in the future.
I think, I think the important element to add to that, I'd like to just make a moment, this is a community center for the entire town, so there'll be benefits, but the senior population, twenty-eight percent of the town, this is a wellness factor for them, this is a life-saving factor for them, this is a way to keep them in their homes today, because they have a place to meet and mingle with other peers. If we don't invest in things, the seniors and the community, I think we're missing a terrible mark as a town, it's one of the critical population areas, segments, and I think it's been on the back burner, we started this project in twenty-fourteen, the first look at it, doing a survey of needs, first proposal came out in about twenty-eighteen, and now we're six years into planning for this, and we patiently waited for all the other departments to come through and get their priorities, but I think it's time for the senior population and the community, and the townspeople think about them as the number one choice right now, and I know it's a hundred and fifty dollars a year, but I think it's money well spent.
You have to look at it two different ways, too, so we have capital debt, and we have operational, and you mentioned the schools and everybody going forward, it's important to keep them separate, and what we did when we built the police station, we started a, a, a system of pretty low debt, because you want level debt in the town, so when something falls off, you wanna plan to fill it, because if you don't, and you take care of operational, everything falls apart, and yes, you can bring that down, your taxes go down, but then that's when the huge spikes happen historically, so if you let your debt level go down, and then you find out you need a building, you need something happen, now, that building, instead of costing a hundred and forty-six, it's a fifteen hundred dollar raise in your taxes, so it's important to maintain what you have and take care of what you have, it's kinda like having a house, you need to cut the lawn, you need to take care of your, make sure you see, you need to take care of the roof, that's what that level of debt services is, so basically what's happened is, the financial team is being responsible by filling that gap right now, when, when a debt drops off, and we have scheduled debt that's gonna keep dropping off, and that's where Phil said there'll be room, so five, six years on the road when the next debt drops off, that's when you plan in the next project, so we keep that at all level, we gotta be realistic, your taxes on the operational side are always gonna go up, we're a business that needs revenue, and unfortunately, the taxpayer is the revenue, two and a half, it's gonna go up no matter what, you can't help that, your assessed value, as your property becomes worth more, your taxes are gonna go up, it's just part of reality that we live with.
Scott?
Yeah, I think too, uh, what you're making is that we can't just project one project, which is why, you know, we've taken our first steps from a financial planning standpoint to look at doing the budget differently this year, I think you've all acknowledged it was a different process, we've also got a capital plan framework in place that we think is gonna continue for the town, but we've also participated in the school and theirs, this is why we know that the school is not planning coming forward this year, because we're actually engaged with them to collaborate on their capital, and to understand what their needs are, and we can bring it all back, so they have a holistic view from a finance standpoint, for our operation, for our capital, so that we can have engaged taxpayers with information, as opposed to just, we need money, that we're not this project.
Absolutely.
It's more of a planned approach for us, as I was used to be, and we did it with the police station, we just kept voting on it, you know, each time for more money, thinking we'd get it, until we actually started to strategize with it and said, you know what, it's not passing because the impact's too great, let's look at our debts and let's start plugging it in, and right now is the time to plug in a capital project, and this is the project that's been in the worst for six years, and, and any future capital project is gonna take a lot more time to plan, we, it's not, if you need a new building, we're not getting it tomorrow, feasibility studies, planning, architecture, it's gonna take four to five years to the next project.
I think, uh, for me, the also, the recognition of the senior center being that emergency management hub, right, to support the town, should there be a drastic, you know, emergency in town, um, of course, that is woefully inadequate, um, so even just whether you believe a new senior center is needed or not, the food pantry, the emergency systems, like, what that building is also supposed to be doing in town, I do think personally, it's critical to upgrade that, but we also can't hide the fact that, you know, we're seeing our, again, our operational budgets continue to increase, uh, with revenues not keeping up, we're seeing the state continue to not do us any favors from school operational piece, right, so there are going to be other increases across the board that people just need to be aware of, hopefully they've been watching, they've been seeing the meetings, they understand the choice, um, you know, this should be voted upon, in my opinion, right, so, um, whether you support or not support it, in my opinion, my personal opinion would be to support the article simply because it should go to town to vote, right?
And I think it should be, it should be a cornerstone to what the town's makeup is, I've lived here for forty years, over forty years, and I've raised kids here, raised a second family here, and now, and retiring here, and this town is a place that my children have moved back into, and I think someday when I get old, and I have to go hang out at the senior center every day, they'll be glad to be able to take me up there, drop me off, and I can have at least some time and be healthy, but I think it's a cornerstone of our fabric, it's not only the kids, it's not only the, uh, middle class, middle ages, it's the entire community, and to your earlier point, there's four hundred and some other families that are not seniors, that go there for assistance, that they, through our, our resource, fuel assistance, location of resources that they may need to take care of their parents, whatever their need- whatever their needs are. And that center will drop on a dime and do anything they need to get that done. And it probably has one of the highest volunteer participations in any department in the town, which is free money. Oh, by the way, the old center in the building that we're in, I think the select board has requested that we have a committee to immediately put in place, once approved, if approved, to reuse the building. It's in good condition, there's a lot of people in highway department and parks and rec could reduce future capital expenditures and reuse that building probably shortly after we move out. So we're saving probably another million or so down the road, in my estimation. So, thank you. I would hope that the FinCom would support this and approve this, with your blessing.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Nick, I had, I had two questions. Um, the first is a procedural one around uh, the motion around the actual location. Um, and if for whatever reason the location was deemed unacceptable, would it not, would this require it to go back to town meeting? That's the first question.
These are no mistakes, have already been done, it's an acceptable site, and engineering and uh, preliminary have already been done on it, so it's an acceptable site. And it and it's being, it's, that site was intended when we purchased it for municipal buildings, so we're using it for the intended purpose also, and leaving space for expansion for more municipal services in the back.
Okay, and my second question is around the naming of it and the thought process of not just calling it a community center.
Nick was asking about the naming of it and not just.
In the motion, it's called out as a
Senior and Community Center.
Senior and Community Center, right? And I think in the ballot, it will also be called a senior and community center as well, right?
Currently, the facility is being used by ten to twenty organizations, going to meetings in the daytime or in the evening. Uh, there's a need and a want for additional usage of that building. Because of its limited size, we can't accommodate groups during the day very well, because we need to reconfigure it, there's only one major room. Uh, but I can envision, and I think you need to look at this building as a vision, uh, if you have your kids in Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts, uh, and they wanna come over and after school have their programs there, they wouldn't have to wait until we close the building down for the seniors, then open it up in the evening, and they can come in and use it. Because they currently use that for den meetings. Uh, so I think there's some other areas that we currently use as a center, we can expand that. We're working with Ann Mazur and the uh, recreations department, so we're looking at adding some recreation to this facility as well, which will attract ages in multiples, ages from teenagers up through seniors. And that will be with racquetball, excuse me, pickleball, basketball.
Yeah, racquetball.
Bocce.
Dodgeball.
Bocce.
And shuttle service.
I forgot to, you can't, you can't do dodgeball.
But also, the food pantry is a community use, and the emergency services would be a community use.
I think, I think what you're asking, why don't we just call it a community center? I I think because its primary purpose, eight to four, Monday through Friday, would be the operations of the senior center. But the senior center, um, we're doing a multipurpose building, so the community incorporates the emergency shelter that we're gonna have there, the community that's gonna use it for the events. So it's it's serving dual purposes, eight to four, Monday through Friday, it's a senior center, but also now it can be open at night, it can be open on the weekends, and the community can use the outside, the inside, and even during the operation hours, eight to four, they still can use the downstairs or the other parts of it for community. So it's just, it's delineating what it actually is, it truly is two operations that we're combining into one, instead of having a community center and a senior center somewhere in town. Because other towns actually have community centers and senior centers.
Okay, yeah, that answers the question, thank you.
Great. Uh, any other discussion?
Yeah, I I just wanted one other question, and I'm, and I'm, uh, this is Jack. Um, in the, in the event that the town meeting for one reason or another decides not to support this, I guess to go back to Jody's earlier point, um, in effect, what would happen is um, the, 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 the school falling off the tax roll, and instead of the senior center occupying that, that, that basically sort of that vacuum, or coming into that vacuum, people could expect, I guess reasonably expect, a reduction in overall taxes, is that fair?
I don't think so. Your taxes won't go down, they just won't go up by as much.
Other than the two and a half percent that's already baked into the budget.
Yeah. So you'll get a reduction, taxes every year are gonna go up no matter what, they just won't go up as much.
What it would do, Jack, is it would give you more space in your operational budget, but it's, it's a really big risk um, to not fill that because essentially what happens is that then becomes absorbed in your operating budget, and then when you need that space later, you don't have it. So essentially, by not capturing that debt, either through the senior center, uh, as a successful vote, my recommendation would be to fill that debt roll-off in FY twenty-five in a different way, if we could, um, through the, the vote of a, a different capital project. Um, but it's important to preserve that debt capacity for reasons we have discussed tonight.
I, 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 I agree, Jody, and I think the explanation provided by you and uh, also the um, select board makes a, makes a great deal of sense. What I was just driving at here is that in the event that it is um, uh, it's defeated at town meeting, what is the backup plan for the capital expenditure in that event?
Well, it's not really dead at the town meeting, we still gotta go through the ballot vote.
Well, no, it doesn't go to the ballot if it does.
No, it doesn't go to the ballot?
Yeah.
Oh, it does?
Then you have a special town meeting to pass the ballot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But I, I think that one of the things that we have carved out is, um, I think as select board member Goddard had mentioned, um, we have a capital plan, and we have things that are in queue um, over the next five to seven fiscal years so that we can uh, be nimble with those items, that we can pull forward if we need to, um, or push back. I mean, there's no shortage of things that we need to do, um, even with regards to capital projects. Um, the pavement studies, all the things, the capital pavement, the pavement management plan. Um, there's, there's a lot of items that are in queue that we can execute on if this doesn't pass.
Thank you, thank you for that, Jody, I think that that, that, that makes a great deal of sense because I know a great deal of work has gone into the capital planning, thanks to uh, the work of chairman, uh, select board member, rather, um, uh, Goddard and uh, and others, including, including uh, Chair of the FinCom, so thank you for that, appreciate it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye. Article twenty-two, uh, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer a sum of money to purchase and install a generator to support the legacy senior center building, or take any other action relative thereto in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from free cash.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Can we talk a little bit about why this would be needed for building a new senior center? Folks might have.
The, the legacy building.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, I do see that coming up on the floor, so. Whoever wants to go for this. So, so currently in emergency management, we use that as a emergency shelter, we have to maintain a generator there. Um, the current generator is long past its life, like, we can't even get parts anymore for it, it's not working. Um, a replacement cost, that's to replace it. This is on there um, for two reasons. Um, one, if the senior center doesn't pass it, we still need that generator there to maintain that one. Um, two, if we repurpose that building and it needs a generator, we can use that. Um, and then actually a third, if the senior center passes, um, and we decide we don't need that type of generator there, that can roll back into free cash, we can send it back to free cash or stabilization, and we can put like a temporary generator there, because we already have hookups there at a lot cheaper rate. So this is kind of a, a preparedness plan for um, the unknown right now. We don't know what's gonna happen with, with all of it, but um, again, if that gets reused and we don't need that generator, the money will roll over, need to get back, it's the way I think we have to transfer it back. We gotta vote it back into some form, so.
I also think it shows that the plan is, is to continue using that building, not to let it sit idle and dormant and become, and become useless.
Take care of what we have, that's what this is all about.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye. Nick, aye.
Aye. Uh, article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to transfer some money from CPA accounts to construct and install two pickleball courts, one bocce court, one basketball court, and two shuffleboard courts at the site of the proposed new Menden Senior and Community Center at Three North Avenue, or take any action relative thereto, in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand from CPA fund account.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
The reason that on this warrant article or the warrant is uh, that while they're doing the excavation of the senior center, it would save money to put in, you know, these facilities at the same time.
Yep.
And then the senior center, senior center doesn't pass, then pass over this article.
Was there any look at putting in a multi-use turf field in that area?
No, that wasn't really the question.
There's some concern about the topology of the, of the, of the area, smoking down.
Yeah.
Get a little bit for the basketball courts, to put a full field in there, but there wasn't a request at the time.
There was or wasn't?
But not.
Really?
Well, I know there's
Floored me.
I know there's a need for
There's a need, but we didn't have a request come to the committee at all, all the past year and a half.
Another downtown property, the class property, which would be very good for kids, so the towns looking into that.
Yeah, I agree that that's probably better overall, but I
That's what I'm hoping for.
Yeah, I guess I'm just floored that that request didn't come in at the time, but
I think it was a request to the schools' capital from planning project, to upgrade the turf fields.
Yeah.
Probably the high school.
Yeah.
I know it's sitting in their plan.
Okay.
But I think they may pull back and may not go with turf, they might just do a natural.
Yeah.
But they have a lot of field renovations as part of their capital.
Okay.
But I would just say this to anyone listening, I do think it makes sense that if people are out there, like, community groups, whether it's soccer, football, what have you, if they're trying to drive field development within the town, they should come to the select board and come to the municipal wards to make sure they get in queue. So this capital plan we have should probably have a placeholder if we're thinking about fields.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, just a question, just a question, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, with respect to the, um, with respect to the, the proposal here, the pickleball courts most particularly, is there um, built into this consideration around uh, noise abatement? Reason I ask is I, I have seen various media reports and various communities about the installation of these courts where the neighbors now are complaining about loud noises, and I, and I just want to make sure that we're, we've got that at least on the radar screen in terms of
It is, it is in the design element. The pickleball courts are being located south of the building, heading down towards, down sixteen, if you look towards Milford, which keeps us away from uh, the properties, households that are in front of the building, and a significant amount of space between that. There's also considered we need to move them away from the, the building itself because the pickleball noise will be clicking away what we're trying to do yoga or some other exercise activity. So
And it's just, it's with your, with your feng shui or something.
It has been considered and it's in design, and I think we're in a good place for it because the location to the left of us would be the Route sixteen. Uh, the location to the right of us, where the pickleballs are gonna, courts would be, would be, I think it's open space. And then the houses are above and beyond where the location will be, the building itself.
It's actually a really good point, I was at Walpole's gorgeous new facility, and uh, it was nine fifteen at night, and there were two pickleball courts in use at the time, so.
Yeah, I think also because of these controversies, they are trying to come up with the ball, balls that are so noisy, so they possibly could also be used in the future.
I'm not aware of that. But I, I think, yeah, I think, I think we've taken into account, we thought about it in our design, location, we didn't put it inside of the building because that would have been behind the houses, uh, and also next to the building. So I think it is across the parking lot, next to a garage, and down, down the road towards Route sixteen. It is a factor in the design.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye. Nick, aye.
Aye. All right. Article twenty-four, to see the town will vote to transfer some money from CPA accounts to hire an engineer to design a walking loop trail from Three North Ave to Twenty Milford Street to Thirty-one Brookview Lane, and a separate loop trail from One Thirty-one North Ave to One O One North Ave to Hope Dale Conservation Areas, with portions to include ADA accessible trails, or take any action relative thereto, amount of three thousand dollars from the community preservation fund accounts.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I think that the amount would be more um, three thousand five hundred to do the engineering, just so that we have the point, uh, three thousand ballpark figure, so we'd like to have a little room. But the idea is that, you know, by the senior center, it would be wonderful to have some ADA trails, which we don't really have in town. And then so where that, that could be done, this would help figure out where that could be done um, and the layout of the trails in that portion. And then the other part is the One Thirty-one North Ave, it was on Hope Dale Street near that, so it's on that property onto the Vixis property, which the town purchased the conservation restriction, and that connects with the Hope Dale Parklands. And the north and south trail almost come together, but they're good trails separately, but in the future, they might connect.
So that's, I was gonna ask, so this would be engineering for all those trails to connect.
Well, they don't, the north and south don't connect, there's like
Right.
Just the littles, yep.
But from the senior center, there would be a trail that would then
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, our, our main, main goal is to get something ADA compliant.
Right.
Anyone who has a handicap.
Yeah.
We have zero in town. Our walking group goes to Blackstone, Milford, and Hope Dale, because there's no trails, we kind of take it along.
And this article would not be passed over if the senior center was voting, yeah.
Correct.
We would inform that anyways.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Um, what's the total length of the trail, proposed trail?
Um, I don't know, I, you know, that's something that we'll find out when we do the engineering, it's hard to say.
Like, we don't have an estimate, it's a quarter of a mile, it's three miles?
Well, we haven't hired anyone, you know, this was a ballpark figure, I sent the maps, and um, you know, they looked at it, and look at the terrain, and so this was an estimate. And, um, you know, once, if this gets approved, we'll, we'll find that information out. I mean, guessing, I would guess it's a couple miles, but, you know, it's hard to say.
Depends on the, depends on the, on the design.
Exactly, it depends on where the trail is out there, and those best part of engineering is figuring out, you know, where the weapons are.
You can make a quarter mile, as a crow flies, be a three-mile
Right, exactly.
So in terms, I'm sorry, Nick, did that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, in terms of the amount, so we're about to vote on three thousand, do we need to update that to three thousand five hundred?
I would, yeah.
All right, so I'm going to amend, uh, amend the motion to the amount of three thousand five hundred from CPA.
So moved. Second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye. Aye.
Aye. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will transfer Article 25, see if the town will transfer some money from CPA accounts to fund the design excavation and purchase of disc golf equipment and installation of a nine-hole disc golf course or take any action relative thereto in the amount of 63,000 from CPA fund accounts.
I think it's 63,500, isn't it?
This is 63,000.
It should say 62,500.
In the amount of 63,500. Can I get a motion from anybody?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
So the, this, this golf course would be on the 75-73 Providence Road property. And, you know, the way to get people out on into the, you know, the trails and whatnot to really interfere with like the hiking or, you know, whatever's happening on the property.
Is there a way to turn this into a revenue stream at all?
Well, I mean, people from out of town might come in.
Yeah.
And, you know, just the fact that they're in town with restaurants and, you know, that gives great revenue to the town. But I don't know if they know about charging.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's like a, I don't know how this works typically. Like, do people go to play disc golf places?
I think they do. I mean, I've never seen over your charge money, but I'm not the one putting up this proposal.
Okay.
So that person's competence are better.
Was this, this was on, I know the special town meeting, but that was only for engineering, correct?
No, it was.
Or design?
It was for design, but there was too many questions people had.
Right.
And so we voted CPA administrative funds to do some due diligence. And so then, you know, so that we had more specific information. And so that's why it's being brought back to town, meaning with the specific information.
So has it already been designed, I guess is my question.
No, these are estimates.
Yeah, the article says.
So that's.
Fund the design.
Design, that's what I was wondering. So this was everything here?
They have someone look at the specific, all three different properties, and then this is one of these are.
Okay. Because before, the only reason why I ask is before it was just designed, so this is all rolled into everything.
Yes.
So if this passes, everything's done. That's what I'm getting at.
Well, and also John brought up at the meeting that he thought that this should be at the annual town itself is another reason.
I, I agree, yeah.
There's an 18, there's an 18, if you want to call it a hole, crossed in Franklin, Mass, that from what I understand gets a lot of use.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, from what I gather, it's a popular.
I guess.
New sport, which is why I would love to find a way to generate revenue off of it.
Tournament.
Where's the location?
It's 73 and 75 Providence Street. It's like, it's sort of like the intersection of Providence and Hartford Avenue East.
Yeah, I know that is.
So that's the land we just purchased?
Yes.
And is there parking for that? Is there parking there for this?
Well, the, the front part of the property is being looked at right now for some kind of affordable housing. We got a grant to, technical assistance grant to look at that. So it might be a combination with that. Or maybe like three spaces might be put on that property. But this property also connects with the Applewood Open Space and 8 Morrison Drive. And so there's parking in that area also, this other parking lot. So that could use.
Have we considered, have we considered other uses for that open space other than this?
Um, well, affordable housing is one. Open space is the other. There, there is a field in there and a kind of an open area, which could be a sports field. And so that would probably, like, when the conservation of history gets written, that would be an option.
So that's not, this isn't a yard hold on this one?
The.
This is our.
Well, um, down in Niagara, well, not necessarily.
No, I was just going to ask, was there, is there any, since we just bought this property, has there been any study on exactly the uses for the intended uses, the different options before we committed something to it?
Yes.
Just, you know, like four or five thousand space will that take up? Is that something we really need to have?
Yeah, it has to be coordinated. There hasn't been like a formal study, but there has been investigation on the property and figuring out how to go with all the coordination. Yes.
Just kind of all like capital plan that we should stop looking at these.
Yes.
Pieces and really figure out the optimal use before we do something then.
But since we have CPA funds, you're, you're limited to open space, recreation, affordable housing, historical. If there's historical preservation possibly in the bars.
Yeah.
Recreation is a high, a high point.
And then so is affordable housing. It's not until you force on us eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah, may I follow on, I'm sorry, you meant to.
Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, may I follow on, on next, on next question here on, if, if, if that location by the intersection there is to be utilized and utilized perhaps even from parking, that's an exceedingly dangerous intersection today. So do we have some input on whether or not we're going to need some sort of a traffic study in connection with this? Are we going to need lights? Are we going to need a parking lot? Are we going to need, what's the master plan here?
Well, that's one of the reasons that we wrote for a technical assistance grant to figure out that site and what would be feasible and possible at that location. So that would be something that would be considered.
I, I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing. Is that something we have or something we're going to get?
So.
The grant? I'm sorry.
Do you want to, do you want to?
I believe he's looking at the traffic study.
Hi, I was just saying that the town, we received a technical assistant grant to look at 75 Providence in the front portion of it to see what kind of affordable housing would be feasible, especially since we just, we have water and septic. And, you know, also traffic would be something that would be considered in that.
Understood on the, but for the use, I guess for the use that's being contemplated here is for the disc golf. Presumably it's going to attract people to want to play disc golf. Presumably people are going to want to park their cars someplace. And people are going to be pulling in and out of that location. It's already a busy intersection. So shouldn't we like understand what that impact is going to be before we spend a nickel?
Well, I mean, the other, like I mentioned before, 8 Morrison Drive has parking and the town owns that. And so that could be used. If the other doesn't work.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is like, like well behind the property though, right? That's like up and around by the fire station?
Yeah, but it, it, it actually abuts the paddock property. It's right next to it.
I mean, I would personally feel more comfortable with this article if I had something down on paper that showed some sort of proposal of where these things would go. I'd also like to understand if it has an impact on that field and its ability to utilize as a multi-use field?
It wouldn't have, it wouldn't impact that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, these are all great questions of, it seems like we want to spend the money without having a total project plan in mind. I'd rather see some sort of at least general design brought forth before we're, we're voting on spending this kind of money.
I think this was, one of the problems was that we didn't want to spend the money at the special town meeting in November for the design, because I think as Jack said and I agreed is that then people thought, well, we've already put that money in, let's just go ahead. But then now we can't, we don't want this because we're afraid we don't have a design.
Yeah, I guess.
I, I understand what you're saying. I don't.
We're just setting aside the money. We're not voting to actually do the work, right?
Yeah, so definitely setting aside the money and this would have to be done in coordination with whatever we do with the property in terms of a field or the affordable housing on the front part of the property. It would have to be coordinated and it would be helpful to have it coordinated anyways.
Let's assume this passes. What are the next steps? The next steps are to hire a design firm using these funds to go through the actual design.
Actually, the first step would be to follow through with that technical assistant grant to find out what affordable housing could possibly be put there.
Okay.
And then once we, once we had that information, then the next step would be to.
If affordable housing can be put there, does that negate the ability to do this?
No, no, I, I think it would work well together.
Okay, it would just be a consideration for the design.
Yeah.
So the next step would then be, we'll go through the design phase and we will put out to bid, figure out who's going to be doing the design, do the actual design. And then once that's done, what is the next step after that? How do, how do we?
Then I guess install it, you know?
Okay, is there, is there, is there any sort of way for the community to weigh in on whether that design is appropriate or not or, you know, at least weigh in on the actual design? Like, what if there's something about the design where it doesn't have enough parking? Will we find a C P issue or something? Is there a way that the project stops and who is the one that stopped the project because of some issues?
Yeah, I mean, that could be incorporated into the planning and implementation of.
Wouldn't that have to be included in the warrant because, the article, because we're voting on, if you read the article.
Yeah.
We're voting on to fund the design, excavation, purchase of disc golf equipment and installation. So this article is for the whole ball of wax.
Correct.
If it passes, it's being built.
You could include in the motion though, what you were saying about having like public hearing on the design or something like that, you know, including people, that could be in the motion.
Yeah.
If that.
Mr. Chair, if I may jump in, just, I recall this came up at the special and I recall that I took the floor to object procedurally and substantively to it. My procedural objection was that it was raised at a special town meeting, as in, I take that to be some emergency is a befallen us, we've got to move one. So I thought it was best that it get pushed off. Substantively, I'm not, I'm not following really the piecemeal approach to the particular use of that parcel. You know, if, if a plan is underway or there is a plan or there is a master plan, I'd like to see it on paper for what exactly is going to happen there. I can't, I can't support this as it stands right now.
Okay. So I would personally like to see written into the article something about either a public hearing or inability for the community to weigh in before the execution of the project happens. Mr. Chair, do you have questions?
Would a reduced scope make sense to folks? I mean, I think part of the problem is I think we need to invest some money to put a plan together that Jack's mentioning and that you're looking for, right? In terms of taking it up to, but not through implementation.
Yes.
So maybe if we, I think you're reading next week. Yeah, it's meeting next week. If you amend the article to not buy the equipment, so we can implement, take it up to design. There's two things that I'm hearing. One, I think Jack's saying, I want to see a plan for the parcel, which makes sense holistically. And you're suggesting something more operationally, Mr. Chair, where you're looking for sort of toll gates in a given project so that people understand where we are, where we go forward or not. And I think doing something like routing slips for safety assurances, like we do in other processes within town, makes sense. We just don't have that operationally in place. But yeah, it's operational versus putting it into a, a board on, you know, I think we should pursue what you're saying.
Yeah, I just don't know how to mechanically make that happen in relation to the warrant. Like if there's verbiage we need to put in there that says all of those things that you just did, I would rather we pass over this tonight and we can meet at 6:30 right before the meeting to talk about it.
Well, in my, in my opinion, you have, we have to change the way this warrant article is written. Because again, included in the warrant article at the end is an installation of a nine-hole disc golf course. Meaning if this, if we vote yes, right here, this group votes yes, we're supporting the building of this.
Yeah, we.
The bottom line, that's the bottom line. We're supporting the building of it.
So.
So I think what you just said, unfortunately, passing it over and doing, let's start with the design. Because it's saying, design excavation. We're given the okay to do it, whatever design is, is designed. Right now, that's it. This is it.
Agreed, yeah.
So let's just back it up and appropriate money for a design and a fees of business.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the other approach is to change the article and break it down into stages.
I would, I would vote for that, but I, I tend to agree with Jack.
You have, you have the article from the, this was brought up at the special town meeting. Do you have?
You want to read it?
Yeah, if you can, because this is what I was alluding to.
So at STM, it was to see if the town will transfer some money for, from the CPA budgeted, budgeted reserve account for professional design services, equipment, signage, and tee pads for an 18-hole disc golf course on town-owned land, location TBD, or take any other action in relation thereto.
And how much was that one for?
10,000.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, that was designing and buying the stuff, right?
Right. This, this article is the whole ball of wax.
Just the design. No, but what you're suggesting is just the design, yes, but even less than that.
The location identified.
The location, right, but design and location.
We can bring that back to the CPC. And I mean, but if you wanted to vote on just the design, then you'll have it voting, you know?
We need to know the amount, what would the amount for the design be?
The design would be $7,000.
So I believe procedurally, Mike, wouldn't have this wa, this article have to be changed on the town meeting floor?
It's just your motion.
Warrant's closed, right? You'd have to reopen.
Right, the warrant's closed.
You, you don't need to change it, warrant. You can always do less than you say on it. So in the motion, if we're just saying design and just dropping everything else, you could do that in the motion. I mean, I'm pretty sure on that.
Yeah, so you're, you're kind of amending it. You're doing less than what's written prior.
Like we couldn't say we're going to do an 18-hole and then ask for more money.
Yeah.
But we can always go down.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Nick. I'm in alignment with Jack where I think Jack's position is that we need to take a holistic view of the whole property versus just looking at this one portion of it. So I would tend to not approve this or not vote yes on this until we look holistically at the property.
Yeah, so Nick, I think where we're going is aligned with your thoughts, right? There's the work that through the grant, they're going to look at the affordable housing to know what that project would look like. If we fund the design, we will know what that project looks like in relation to the affordable housing. And I at least have a, you know, personal thought of wanting to know the options for that as a multi-use field, or at least knowing, did we encroach on that in some way? But I think.
It appears.
Two actions of what we would vote on here for the design, not the purchasing and excavation and installation, combined with the grant that Ann is getting is, are those steps towards a holistic view of the property.
It doesn't appear in my view that that's the case. This is deciding this without taking consideration the entire property.
Well.
I'm missing something here.
Well, the, the property was purchased CPA funds, so like it can only be used for recreation, open space, and affordable housing, historical preservation. So we're looking at affordable housing, we're looking at recreation, we're looking at open space. So I think we are kind of putting a plan together, but the first thing we need to do is figure out the affordable housing part and then coordinating the disc golf with that.
Right, but we haven't looked at all the recreational options, right?
Well, there's not really, I mean, the, the way the property is built, it, there is a field that possibly could be used as a sports field. It's, it's, I, I would say it's not ideal because it would be one field. You can't put more than one in. But we would leave that option open so that in the future that could happen. The disc golf wouldn't ruin that area. golf wouldn't ruin that area. And there's other properties that would be a lot better for sports fields, like the Trask property, because it's flat, it's really close to Misco School. So, you know, the location is excellent. So, I mean, I feel that we have really looked into all the options on this property.
So, point taken. I think, I think what I would like us to do is, is to vote on appropriating, or voting to recommend $7,000 for the design of the disc golf course, and just limit it to that. This way, a total plan can be put together before we're purchasing and moving forward with the excavation and installation. And if we do that, that's simply a, you, you would modify the amendment via the motion on the floor?
Mm-hmm.
And move forward that way?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, we wouldn't need to, need to vote again, because we're going to approve.
If you vote, yeah.
If we vote to support that, yeah. Okay. All right. So, can I get a motion to see if the town will transfer some of the money from CPA accounts to fund the design of a disc, of a nine-hole disc golf course in the amount of $7,000 to be transferred out of the Community Preservation Fund account?
Does that cover, again, Jack's concern with basically a plan of a, how does that coincide with, with a plan for the rest of, of the property? If I'm not mistaken, I don't want to speak for Jack.
I, I think you're, I think you're right on, Mike, and I think Nick is right on. The idea is that I, I can envision a situation where we get a $7,000 study that says, "You can accommodate nine holes of disc golf here." Okay. So, the consultant's been paid for that, you write the check. How does that help us make a decision around further expenditures and use, whether that's good money after bad, when now a decision has got to be made on, "Oh, you put the golf course in, and now we need parking, now we need ADA compliance, and now we need traffic, and now we need a traffic light there." And now, we're, we're in for a pound, we're in for a penny, right here, on having spent the money to begin with without understanding what the full scope of this is. I just want to make sure we're going in eyes wide open. But I think that, actually, the study has got to be broader. As Nick was describing, what is the plan for the use of the property overall? And then, how does the golf course fit in there? That's what we need. I think.
I think what Ann is telling us, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there are limited uses of that property. Two of, one use is already covered, open space. The other two uses are being studied, and a, a project proposal will be developed. One through a grant for affordable housing. The other, we are voting on right now to support the design, which, does that $7,000 include any sort of assessment of traffic?
No, but I think...
Does it include parking and all the details?
Yes, yes. I mean, I think the affordable housing one would deal with the aspect of traffic more, you know? And especially if the parking's at 8 Morrison Drive.
Yeah.
It's off, you know?
So...
Providence.
The design work being done for the affordable housing project is taking into account the things you're questioning. That needs to be done first. The golf course design is being done after the affordable housing piece, which will take into account the information received through the affordable housing design work. And it's still leaving open other options for recreational use of the field to be determined later, because the plan for the design is for the disc golf course to not interfere with that field. So, there are no other options left open for that space. So, therefore, that is the total use of the property. Did I capture that correctly?
I think so.
With, with all due respect, Mr. Chair, I, I can't support, like, all of this sort of, these contingencies here. I gotta, I gotta sort of see what the plan is. And absent seeing our overall plan, I just, I just can't support it. This is all pineless guys, right?
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All right, can I get a motion to see if, to, can I get a motion to see if we should recommend to the town to transfer a sum of money from CPA accounts to fund the design of a nine-hole disc golf course located at 73 and 75 Providence for $7,000 to be pulled from the Community Preservation Fund account?
I'll make a motion.
Does anybody second? All right. No seconds. I guess I will go through the motion of talking about the article as is. Can I get a motion to see if the town will transfer some money from CPA accounts to fund the design excavation and purchase of disc golf equipment and installation of a nine-hole disc golf course, or take any action relative thereto in the amount of $63,500 from CPA fund accounts? Okay. So, seeing as how I can't get a motion or a second, then...
Mr. Chairman, before, this could be a point of order, is, did you, did you state before, at the beginning of the meeting, that the chairman of the finance committee will not vote? Because if you did, then you can't vote. If you didn't, then you can second any motion, or step down and, and make a motion, I believe.
I did not see that.
Mike, do you, does that sound correct?
Sounds good. You can sit down a second. If no one else does, you can sit down a second. Just to, to the point, I have a discussion, and then if you all vote no, then you vote no. Yeah. You should, you should second any ways you see.
Correct, that's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah, we can all vote to not, or people can vote to not support, so. All right, I'm going to go back to the original of, can I get a motion to see if the town will, to see, to recommend to the town, supporting a transfer of a sum of, sum of money from the CPA accounts to fund the design of a nine-hole disc golf course, or take any action relative thereof, in the amount of $7,000 from the Community Preservation Fund account?
I'll make a motion.
All right, so I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nick, no.
He's got to ask for the nays. You ask for the ayes, then you ask for the noes. So...
Nays?
Jack, nay.
Nay.
All right, so, motion fails. So, the Fincom does not recommend the motion as I stated. We should probably still vote on the article as written. So, can I get a motion to see if the town will transfer some of the money from the CPA accounts to fund the design excavation and purchase of disc golf equipment and installation of a nine-hole golf course, or take any action relative thereto in the amount of $63,500 from the Community Preservation Fund account?
I'll make a motion. We should vote on this.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
All right, motion fails. So, the town, or the Fincom does not recommend to the town to support Article 25. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to transfer some money from CPA accounts for lighting the tennis and basketball courts at 29 Millville Street, or take any action relative thereto in the amount of $50,000 from the Community Preservation Fund account.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
So, lights were voted for the fields in that location, and so, Dan, the parks director, thought, well, the basketball courts and tennis courts need lights also. So, while they're doing that work, he thought this would be a good time to also, yeah.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
This is Nick. Just a question on the timing of when they would be turned off at night.
I don't know. I mean, that would be, Dan would have to answer that. I don't know.
Thanks, Ann.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Jack, aye.
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 Nick, aye.
Passes. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to transfer some money from the CPA accounts for fragmites removal at Meadow Brook Woods, 100 Park Street, or take any action relative thereto in the amount of $3,000 from the Community Preservation Fund account. I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, what are fragmites?
It's fragmities. It's, it's a non-native invasive weed that just really spreads rapidly. Like, you know the grass, like, when you're on the highway and you get off and exit, and there's all that grass around the water, and it just, like, has the puffy kind of top to it. That's fragmities. And there's a small patch on one of the water areas in Meadow Brook Woods, and so, we wanted to remove it before it gets out of hand.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Aye.
Aye. 28, to see if the town will vote to transfer some of the money from CPA accounts to subsidize an affordable housing, housing project at 52 Providence Street, or take any action relative thereto in the amount of $500,000 from the Community Preservation Fund account.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
So, this is a property of 52 Providence Street, and an RFP has gone out for affordable housing, and the, their, the deadline is after the town meeting. But affordable housing usually isn't built because it's, developers don't make money on it. And so, usually, the town has to supplement those projects to make them viable. And so, if nobody, if there aren't any proposals, then this money will just go back into the CPA account. And this is also taken from the affordable housing account. And this money can only be used for affordable account, affordable housing, so.
Do you have any examples of other communities that have subsidized their affordable housing?
That's a good question for Jack Hunter, the planner, but it, it's very typical that you subsidize these types of projects.
But you can't name any, any of a, any community that's done that?
I know there are communities, and I know it pretty much is done on every project. But Jack Hunter, like I said, he worked on a project in Hudson, and they had to subsidize it. And it's common, and it's needed. And affordable housing is needed in Mendon.
Any other discussion?
I mean, I guess one thing I would add to that is, if a developer puts a proposal and they don't ask for subsidy, then that money goes back into CPA, or if they ask for less, you know?
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Jack, aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye.
Article 29, to see if the town will vote to transfer and authorize a treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to transfer the sum of $1,800,000 from CPA accounts, a portion to be reimbursed by grants and other funding, for the purpose of purchasing a permanent conservation restriction for conservation, agriculture, and/or passive recreation purposes on the product located, as described in the article, consisting of 201 acres, more or less, that said conservation restriction be conveyed to said town of Mendon and the Metacomet Land Trust under the provisions of MGL Chapter 184, 31 through 33, and the town of Mendon be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the town to effect said purchase, or take any action relative thereto, the amount of $1 million from the Community Preservation Fund account. Does, this says 1 million, but the article says 1.8?
Yeah, because we're planning on writing a grant proposal for the land grant. You have to put aside the money. It's a reimbursement grant, so you have to do that. And that, and it's all the extra wording, because they, the state requires that. So, that's why it's all in there.
So, can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion?
You want me to explain it a little bit?
Yeah, please.
It's, so this property is off of Thera Road, and it's owned by Peter Denton, and he would like to preserve this property. And at the same time, kind of serendipus, serendipitously, Audubon was looking at all the properties in the state, because they have funding to support land conservation, and they picked this exact property. And so, they got in touch with Metacomet Land Trust and me, and said, "This is a property they want to help preserve." And so, they helped fund, like, an appraisal on the property, and they've been working with us on figuring out how we could preserve it. So, the appraisal came out at 1.6 million, but then you have all the due diligence and the conservation restriction, all that. So, that's why the amount is 1.8 million. Actually, the, the total cost is $1,776,625. But at the time that this warrant went out, we didn't know the exact amount, so we wanted to do it higher, you know, just to, because you can always go down. And the property is, it's 100% biomap, like, rare habitat. And it's also, really interestingly, Mendon has an aquifer that covers 2/3 of the town, and this happens to be right on the source of the aquifer. And so, you know, Mendon, most people are on wells, and so, this is also helping to protect that aquifer, which is really important. And it also has really valuable wildlife habitat. And so, the Nature Conservancy has preliminarily approved a grant for $600,000 to Mendon. We have a letter with that. And what's left is more like due diligence types of things. So, we know we have $600,000. Audubon is committed to put money in, and we're figuring that's about $180,000. And because this land is so valuable for wildlife, and it's just a good habitat, and, I mean, for flood protection, just so many things, we, we think we have a very good chance for the land grant. And so, it would end up being around $500,000 of CPA funds. But we won't know about the land grant until after the meeting, so there's a possibility that it could be a million. And this would be for buying the development rights, it would be for conservation restrictions, so Peter Denton would still own the property, but it couldn't be developed ever, any landowner that had it. And that the public would also have access to the property on trails. So...
So, this is not taking that property off the tax roll?
No. But, you know, it's a 61A property, so it, there's not a lot of taxes. I think the taxes each year are, I have it written down, and I'll have it for the town meeting, but I think they're like $5,000 or less, so it's really minimal. And, and it would be, that if it was developed, it would be 43 houses. And so, I know we have a controversy about this, but, you know, houses tend to, I mean, studies have shown that housing costs the town money, because you have services, you have road, you have schools and whatnot, whereas open space doesn't. So, you know, there's that aspect also. I don't know, is there any questions on it? Because it is a...
I want to ask, because this is going to come up at annual town meeting. I know we've got a restriction on property off that. What's the theory behind buying restrictions instead of trying to actually purchase a land? I know he wants to stay there, but why not, instead of a restriction of purchase, like, of what a lake tenants... a Woodalike tenancy?
Well, yeah, the, I mean, the people that own the property want to keep it, you know, they want to keep the property, and they just want it preserved, and it's actually helpful for the town because you're, you don't own the property, and you're not having to take care of it, but you're restricting the development. But we also set aside some funds for, like, trail maintenance and maintenance of the property, but it's really the homeowner or the landowner that is responsible for that, and so it's just less responsibility to the town, really, you know? But you still have the advantages, you still have the advantages of the property, you know?
But the town's paying $1 million for that privilege. 1.8 million for that privilege.
Well, but it's a lot more than just having access, I mean, you're, you know, protecting your water, your aquifer, it's flood protection, and, I mean, many of you have seen how the rains have really flooded properties, and if you build everywhere and you don't have properties that can absorb that water, you're going to have more flooding, and there's going to be more rains, more extreme, you know, weather.
Other options to look at, I guess even if we don't own it, I know Metacomet takes land in the trust, like, just so it's not an owner, like, Metacomet has it, and we know it's always going to be preserved, I mean, because don't even get the issue with homeowners too, like, say someone buys it, and then they want to just do what they want to do there anyways.
They can, but they're.
If they can, you just have to fight them on it, now, now, it becomes a legal problem for the town because they're doing whatever the heck they want on it, and now you just try to stop them.
I mean, yes, in some instances, you want to own the property, in this instance, you know, Peter wants to own it, it's not an option, but most people, like, the next owner, let's say, after Peter, you know, owns a property, you know, you're not going to buy 200 acres that you can't build on, you know, if.
I guess you'd like to buy someone who bought 200 acres and do what the heck they want on it, and they can mess up stuff that you have, you say they can, but they can because then it's a civil battle for the town.
Well.
To stop them from doing it.
Yeah, well, that's why you have, like, Metacomet Land Trust and the town jointly would be holding the conservation restriction, and Metacomet has, like, a legal fund for conservation restrictions, you know, it's like an insurance on, you know, for properties,
So because of how this is going about, if that issue does arise, it's not only us fighting that battle, it's.
Yeah, and, and it's, and and those kinds of situations are really rare, and usually they're minor, you know, it's not like somebody's going to start building a house, I mean, it's, you know, they can't.
Because we deal with it on the edge of, we deal with people doing whatever the heck they want anyways, and they call us first, and we go in the building department, you know, other, other agencies, people on, half the time, if they figure they own it, they're going to do what they want, you know?
Yeah, well, that's.
That's what we deal with all the time, we deal with the side of it, have to let them know it's civil.
But I mean, that's why it's, you have the conservation restriction on it, and you monitor it, you know, so.
I'm sure you get those questions at the A.C.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and the thing too is that a lot of these really iconic and important properties happen to be coming up, you know, at the same time, is because these people are getting older and they're dying, and so this is our opportunity to preserve these properties, and once they're built on, you know, you, it's done, and so, and with the CPA funds, we have the money right now to do that, and it, and, and because we are writing grants and working with other organizations, and so we, you know, we're using money from other sources.
And I'm just becoming old school, I like to actually own something if I'm paying for it.
Yeah, sometime, well, you you are owning, but not having it be developed, and we do have access to the property and everything, but sometimes owning a property has a lot more headaches than not owning it, you know, so it's kind of, goes both ways.
Yeah, I mean, I have to assume if it was ever sold, I mean, this has to be a big piece of information of whoever's going to be buying the property next, like.
Oh, yeah, it's, I mean, it's a lien on the property, like, I mean, you know, when you buy it, you know what you're getting into.
Yeah.
And you have to sign the conservation restriction, because the next person owns it has to sign it, and, you know.
Any other discussion?
Yes, this is Jack, may I just ask a question, please, Ann? Ann, with respect to this parcel, 200 acres, I'm, I'm trying to get my arms around the 200 acres here on 192 and Thayer, reason why I'm asking is, I may very well be in a butter, or if not in a butter, close to being in a butter here, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of.
Old South, is Old South Woods close here?
It's more south, it's, it's more south than where you are, it's, a lot of the Varney property surrounds it.
Yeah, well, that's exactly where we are on, on King Philip, so.
Yeah.
It feels very close to, to, to be being a part of this property, that's, that's, so it's for that reason, I'm just going to abstain.
Yeah, I, the Providence piece, the 192, it's not on Providence Road, it's backland, that's on the other side of Muddy Brook, but the assessor has to assign a road to it, and so that was the road that she assigned.
Yeah, and, and by the way, I don't own that much property, this is, I just exceedingly close.
You're the second largest landowner in Mendon.
Yeah, right, exactly. But, but when I saw 192 Providence, I, I'm, I've seen that address before, so I'm pretty sure that, at least on assessor's map, that's cutting close to Old South Woods, the entire development area.
Okay, well, we are still okay to vote and have quorum, even if you abstain, so I think we're good. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye. And Jack, do you want to just, just say abstain?
Yeah, Jack, abstain.
Thank you. All right, we're going to pass over 30, pass over 31, pass over 32, and 33 is the last one. Yes, okay, to see if the town will vote to approve the $10 million debt authorized by the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional District School Committee on February 15, 2024, and amended by its actions of March 14, 2024, to pay costs of roof construction and the replacement to energy-efficient rooftop HVAC units at the Blackstone Valley Regional Technical Vocational Technical High School located at 65 Pleasant Street up the Mass, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, such debt approval by the town to be contingent upon the district's ability to secure grant approval from the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerated Repair Grant Program, or take any action relative thereto. Authorized debt-only future assessment to include debt attributable to Mendon.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jack, aye.
Uh, Nick, aye.
Aye. That is all the warrant articles. Awesome.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nick, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Close at 9:02 PM.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.